We have our open study session for the FEMA mitigation grant.
Council Chair.
Councilman Muscat.
It's kind of hard for me to know where to begin here, other than I think when we set up this study session, I was trying to get some paperwork from the state telling us exactly what we're looking at, and I haven't seen anything. I don't know where to go with this. We have one side saying one thing and other people saying another, and without documented proof from the state of what we actually paid for the house and what was reported, I don't know what to say or do. We're going in circles here without actual documentation from the state.
Okay, Councilman Bazey.
What we need, we need to actually FOIA the records from the state, because all the stuff that I've looked at, again, it looks conflicted between what was submitted to FEMA versus what was sent to the actual residents. So we actually need what was submitted to FEMA or to the state, to the federal government, as how much we paid the residents. As of right now, we don't have anything. I'm working on a FOIA to the state, see if I can get all the records.
Now...
Okay, well, let me ask a question. Mr. Mayor, do we have that information in-house today of what the state paid us? Do you have the paperwork, Mrs. Laslow?
Yeah.
Okay.
We don't destroy anything. We got all the records.
Could we be provided with a copy of it? Because I thought we would have been provided with a copy before this study session, because that was part of what this was all about.
I guess, you know, I'm gonna go over there, because there's a lot of paperwork here. I was notified of the study session when the city council agenda came out. Nobody from council asked me for anything. When council did ask me for items, Councilwoman Clayton, Ms. Clayton asked me for items in the past in the summer, same with Councilman Bazey, I provided that. The two questions that were asked at the last meeting was why was there an appraisal, or an amended appraisal, this smoking gun? And I have the answer with answers from the state for both of these questions. If you want to pass that to the council members, I outlined them, and then I have a backup. Then I have a backup. And then I have another backup.
Excuse me for one second, and...
Councilman Muscat, recognized?
I think some of that may be my fault, because I made the statement without asking for the information. I made a statement like, "We need to have this information," but I never asked for it, so...
But I do have...
Some of it is my fault that...
Oh, thanks.
Well, I know you have it there, but I'm saying it in my possession. Let's put it that way. So it's somewhat my fault, and I apologize for that.
Wait.
I put...
Councilman Miyaki?
Yeah, Council Chair, I was gonna hand out something as well while everything is being passed out.
Sure, come on up. That was fine.
Well, that's...
So again, on Councilwoman Bazey, I think you contacted FEMA because they contacted the state, and what was submitted in a grant application included many different items, including the building replacement value. Your second backup is an email from the State Hazard Mitigation Officer dated in November of 2014. It explains what the building replacement value is. There was multiple discussions with the then-current council, which did not include Councilwoman Muscat on Councilwoman Bazey or Councilwoman Denise Malinowski, but did include the rest. It was explained then that this BRV is used for the damages, for the flood damages to assess that, and to pretty much put that number in. I then had to provide a number for the grant, a number, a placeholder. I'm not getting an appraisal, because I didn't get the grant. This grant took two years before we were awarded a grant. I had to put a number in the grant. The number I estimated was between the BRV, Trulia, and a couple other on the Realtor sites. I was explained I could get that number from anywhere. I was also told I could do two times the SEV. I knew Dearborn Heights properties were going for more than two times the SEV, and every single one of these properties did. So if I would have put that money in, we wouldn't have had enough money to complete the grant. There was questions. So we applied for the grant. We had this spreadsheet that was, I believe, what... The spreadsheet that I believe what council people were looking at is what Gary just passed out. That's a part of the grant attachment.
Councilwoman Abdullah?
Can you just, for clarification, for the residents and for all the council people, for all of us, BRV and FMVs fair market value?
Right.
Was that the amount of the appraisal, or no?
No, no.
That's the SEV?
No, what we did was we took exactly what we had from the assessor's office, and we put it into these numbers.
Okay, so that's what you're referencing as a fair market value under this statement that I've got from the attorney, from your Miyaki?
Correct, correct.
Okay, then the other one's BRV. What does that specifically stand for?
Again, that, building replacement value...
Building replacement value.
Oh, for replacement, okay.
Is, for the audience, is if you took your current house, whether it was built in 1980 or yesterday, and you took it all down, completely down, and you rebuilt it exactly the same, the same finishes, the same everything. You're never gonna get that, but that's a number that you can put in with that amount. And there was this big discussion, why, why would I use the BRV? Well, why use the BRV is because the state instructed me to use the BRV to complete the application. And that's the question, too, that I handed out to council. Question one, long courtroom setting of why there was a different, the same appraisal that was amended. If you look at your little packet I put out, I kind of labeled them A, and then back again. So there was an email from the State Hazard Mitigation Office. Maybe I'll back up first. We were awarded the grant. We went out for a proposal to get appraisals, appraiser. We hired the lowest appraiser. We procured them by the standards, and we opened it up for residents to start getting appraisals. There was four homes that started the process. It was actually five, but there was four that were the first, four that went. They went to the state of Michigan. The first home was approved, 23430 Hanover, was approved. There wasn't an issue. It was under three times the SEV. The rest of the properties were held up, because a couple of them were over three times the SEV, the state equalized value. They, in your little packet, when the State Hazard Mitigation Officer realized that they were over three times the SEV, the state police had an administrative desk review, where they hired their own person, their own appraiser, to look through this and come up with some of the issues that they had. These issues came back, and they stated in an email on August 18, 2016, that there was various amounts deducted from each of the properties for being in a flood plain, but 23340 wasn't, didn't have anything deducted. So I sent that out in the appraisal. The appraiser came back, and that's in C, and he made the adjustments and the amendments to the appraisals that addressed the state concerns. Then, in attachment D, the state of Michigan approved the adjusted amended appraisals. Per motion 16309, the city council approved, among other properties, the purchase agreement for this property. Also included is a purchase agreement dated 2016, which the homeowner signed and agreed to the property. Lastly, on the date of actual closing, the homeowner also has to agree to a letter of voluntary participation that says he's agreeing to the amount and that we're in no way forcing him to sell the property. At any time, if the homeowner was not satisfied with the appraisal, and I do see some of the homeowners are here, some of them actually went and sought their own appraiser. They went to see their own appraisal, and the state then reviewed that, and they got a higher amount.
Yeah, I... I'm sorry.
Councilman Muscat?
Again, I'm gonna go back to what I believe is the crux of this whole thing. People are saying that we paid X amount of dollars for the house, and we reported a different amount of money to the state. And that's what I want to see. We also had complaints that, at time of closing, people were asked to take a lower amount at the day of closing.
That never happened.
Well, I've heard that to myself.
I'm just saying, and this is why...
It can't be, because they had to...
I wasn't there, so I can't...
I understand, but if I can explain how that's not, the title company actually sends everything there. Our purchase agreements are the same exact amount that's done at the closing that the title company takes. And the money that we get from the state, I don't take. The money is wired to the treasurer's office for the exact purchase price of the property.
That, well, I understand how the process works. I've bought and sold houses before, and I'm sure Mr. Abdullah will tell us that's true, too. But what I'm being told is that the day of closing, when you go in to close, the numbers changed. And I don't understand how that could happen, okay? So what I want to see with my own eyes of what we paid for the house, and I want to see a document from the state saying what we did pay for the house, what we reported to the state. That's all I'm concerned with.
And I can give you all of that.
Okay, I want a document from the state saying, yes, the city paid $96,000 for this house, and it was just 96. It wasn't 134, whatever the amounts are.
Are you saying that it might have... Okay, so, when we, on the day of closing, there's the title company that goes back and forth with the homeowners and with the city. We get a final water bill. They see if they owe anything for a mortgage, and they deduct all that. We paid the transfer taxes. All the council motions include the closing fees.
But that's all done before closing. All those fees are all reset.
All done before closing.
So the property owner already has that figure in her hand?
By email, from the title company, not from the city.
Correct. So, again, what I'm trying to say is, you offered, I was offered $96,000 for my home, and that's what I got.
Right.
I signed for it. I went away with it. But then you turn around, and you told the state a different amount of money.
And that's where, and that's where the timeline, and that's what, I have approvals from the state. It's a little letter from the state that says, "The city of Dearborn Heights is approved for this amount for this property." And I have that for every single property. They don't, what you're looking at is the actual application, which is a different number, but they have the exact number that we paid, which is the same as the purchase agreement that the council approved, which is the same.
I'd still like to see a spreadsheet.
Yeah, I'd like to see that.
Well, it's not a...
Or something from the state for each of the...
It's just a one-page letter that just said the state authorizes this amount.
Okay, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton?
Yeah, authorizes this amount, but what did we report to the state that we actually paid?
There's a progress report. I have a spreadsheet of that, yeah.
That's what I want to see.
That's what we need a copy of.
I can get that, too.
And I guess that's all that I'm interested in, is that, because I'm being told they signed for 96, they looked it up on the web, that the city paid 136,000. You know, I'm not saying it's true or not. I'm just saying that's what's being told to me, and that's why we're having this study session. So it brings up legitimate questions that need to be asked. And so if I was out, if somebody gave me a price of $90,000, and then the state was told it was $140,000, $50,000 difference, I'd say, wait a minute, where's my 50 grand?
And that's, again, that goes back to the BRV.
I'm just, again, you understand what I'm asking for?
I understand.
Okay.
Okay, okay. Let's move on. Councilman Abdullah?
So it was reported to the state the BRV prior to the application, the initial application, right?
This is a...
During the initial application?
This is the application, correct.
But the accusation, and obviously, none of us have had the opportunity to look over, you've just handed to us, because we just got it.
I just got the accusation two weeks ago.
Okay, so I'm just gonna talk about the elephant in the room. I'm gonna talk direct.
Right.
The accusation is, the resident was given, similar to what Councilwoman Ray Muscat was just saying, the resident was given hypothetically $100,000, but it was reported to the state that you gave the resident, and I'm gonna use hypothetical numbers, $150,000. Can you provide us, as a council, on all the properties, what was reported to the state, specifically, not the BRV, because I do understand the BRV on any property worth hypothetically $100,000, this is based on my business, $100,000 today on a property on, I don't know, whatever, Kenlock, if it's worth $100,000, that's what market value would be, but if you were to rebuild it, yeah, it might be 162.
Right.
I get that. So I get how the BRV is gonna be higher than what the actual final appraisal and sales price is. I get that. But what, in order to clarify yourself, and of course, for some of the council members that had this objection, what was the amount that you gave to the residents, be it by check from the closing, and what was the amount you reported to the state? What you are being accused, when I say not you...
No, I am being accused.
The city's being accused of...
Please, please, yes.
Yeah, the city's being accused of that you reported to the state a much higher amount than what you actually gave to the residents.
Yeah.
So it should be cut and dry and very easy to clear up.
Yeah, I like that.
Okay, Councilwoman Hicks Clayton is next.
Well, I think they summed it up, because I was gonna say that there's gotta be a paper trail, right?
Simple.
When you close, when you have a closing, you have the title, you have the paperwork. You know what checks the amounts are issued. All of that can be verified.
Wired, but yeah.
And you have all that back. There's always a paper trail. And I think if that's just presented on the questions that council members have, which properties, this can all be resolved.
I would appreciate it, and I would like to go a step further, that certain council people considering me are saying I'm shady, and not, there's a lot of residents that really benefited from this. There's some people that didn't have another option, but there's a lot of people that, to this day, are calling me to continue with these grants, and these grants are a lot of work. This is not, this is something that I sought out to do. This is something that one of the residents here, who was more vocal, Mr. Brown, kept saying, "Buy my house, and I sought out with the state." So I would really appreciate when the council does get all the information, just like I said before. I don't need a public apology, but I would like it to come back to a city council meeting on the same venue and say, you know what, we got these documents, we're satisfied with that. I would like that. I know certain council people called FEMA. I know certain people, certain council people called the state, and they were giving the same answers I'm giving today. I'm not gonna sit there and go back and forth and play rogue, but there's a lot of times that city employees get beat up over stuff, and it gets all resolved, and then it's moved on to the next issue, and people don't know what happened, and there's still other people who might turn in and say, oh, what did happen? What did happen with this? Is there still a question out there? So I have no problem providing that all, but I would ask that, if you can give me the same...
Councilman Bazey?
Okay, well, yes, I did call FEMA. That's way after, when I, when I asked for the original appraisals, some residents got ahold of me. They told me that these houses, this is how much money they got for these homes. Okay, I wanted a document that was uploaded to a website. When I went to it, it was gone. It disappeared from the website. So I talked to few residents. Luckily, those residents have already uploaded that document. So obviously, that document, when the question was raised, the document disappeared from the website.
That's not true.
No, no.
See, I had the same problem, too.
Yeah, we, well, we actually, myself and the council chair went to it.
I did, too. I was in the middle of going through it, and it disappeared.
And it disappeared. So however...
The council item, it's not a page that I have, so that's not true. Don't throw shade on that.
No, 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 no. I have a, I have a copy where it says this document does not exist anymore.
I did, too.
So, yeah, I mean, you got two council members.
I thought I was doing something wrong, because I had brought it up.
Anyway, we let you finish. Can we finish, please?
Finish accusing me. Go ahead.
No, I'm not accusing you. I'm telling you...
We're not accusing you.
You're calling me shady.
You asked a question. You said you contacted FEMA, and I'm telling you why I contacted FEMA.
No, they contacted me.
No, I contacted them, though. That's why they contacted you.
Okay, please let the councilman speak.
Okay, the reason why they probably contacted you, because I was concerned, when residents bring something to our, for us to address, it's our job to look into the matter, and that's what I did. We went in there, tried to find all the stuff that was discussed. I couldn't find it. So luckily, some of the residents already uploaded that document. So then I asked you for an appraisal. I looked at the appraisal, and I had a broker actually look at these appraisers, appraisals for the different homes, and they did not make sense to me. You can't, you know, you have, I mean, again, we discussed it at the last meeting. I don't want to go back and forth to the same thing we discussed. These appraisals looked shady, and I can bring you...
But that was approved by the council. You can't say that.
Well, again, there was different appraisals that were submitted, and that's what I asked, and that's what Councilman Muscat is asking. We need to know exactly what was submitted to the state. You said, okay, we gave them this, this, okay, let's say $100,000. We need to see, okay, we did pay $100,000 for this particular house. This is what we submitted to the state, and here's the appraisal to match what we submitted to the state.
I have that.
Okay, that's what we need. We've been discussing it for a while. We haven't seen it.
Please let the councilman finish. Do not interrupt.
So then, then, we asked at the last meeting, we said, okay, we talked about this application, that, at least 60, 70-page document that somebody uploaded, that sent it to us. I looked, I looked at all the stuff, looked at the homes, and again, you know, these appraisals did not make sense. There's a big gap between, there's a house that was paid $96,000 for a particular home, and again, we show in a state document that we paid 130 to the resident. There's another house, it was like 200-something, we say we paid that resident. Again, that's what we showed the state.
No.
Again, that's what we need. That's what Councilman Muscat is asking. That's all we need. If we can get that document, we're happy.
Just provide us...
Then I would ask that we stop this now, and I give you the documents, because what you're saying isn't true, and maybe it's because you don't understand or don't...
Okay, well, let's get the documents to us, and then we can continue discussion later, because I don't think at this point we're being productive in any way in regards to this.
Council Chair, if I may?
Yes, Council Miyaki?
Okay, that was part of what we described the last time. The problem was, is that we were looking at the BRV of 136, 111, for example, and then the property actually sold for, if I recall correctly, $90 or $96,000. So there's a $40,000 discrepancy, and that was one of the issues that was originally raised. So there are basically four things that need to be looked at. There's a discrepancy regarding the BRV, which I think has been explained. The document that you have here, at least this is as much as I was able to print out of what Ms. Laslow ended up sending over to me, shows that you have these four different columns, including the BRV. So it explains how that misunderstanding could end up being explained as being, look, you're looking at the BRV. This document, namely the document that you were given, was part of the application, but the application was to give values. It wasn't to give what the city was to receive specifically back. The city was never going to end up receiving any value here. It was gonna only receive value based on what it was gonna pay the property owner, based on an appraisal that was accepted by the state police and by FEMA. So going back over to what was submitted to the state in terms of the grant application misses the whole point of the process. It takes it totally out of context. The point is, is that what the city ended up giving were different values, four different values for each one of these properties, to give a magnitude for the state to see that there was a point, and I was asking for an overall amount with respect to the grant. Then, so that takes care of one discrepancy. The other one, the missing documents on the city council with regard to the city council packet. Ms. Laslow and I spoke about this, and not trying to, you know, in any way upset you, Ms. Laslow, but when we talked about it, I think she feels less defensive. She said, look, that was, that was something that was, when we did all the computer upgrade stuff, these things ended up coming off in terms of them being part of city council packets. That was something that ended up coming off of the website at that point. It wasn't something that was taken down by the administration. If it was taken down, it was taken down because of upgrades with regard to the city website.
Could you tell me exactly when those upgrades occurred?
I do not know. I'm simply saying something...
Years ago, but the clerk...
Okay, now, this was within the last six months. I was in the middle of looking it up. I saved it as a favor on my computer and brought it up twice, and on the third time, I Googled it on the internet, and it came up, so I made it a favorite, and I went in two days in a row. The third day, it said there was a problem with the site, and then it never came up after that.
What, what page, or what, where?
It was a part of a Google search, and Jim...
Bring it to the next meeting. We have, I could send you the...
Actually, I think I still have it bookmarked on my computer, but it just says, the link is no longer available. It was, it's gone.
But if it is the same document that essentially you just got handed out, then we understand where the discrepancy is with regard to the BRV versus how much was, was paid. And the other difference that I want to be clear about, and I don't know, and some of this would depend on who you got the information from, is the difference between the purchase price and cash in hand. I mean, I think every one of these, the seller would be required to end up normally, but I didn't review these, but I know that Harry Caljirakis did. Normally, they would have to end up providing title insurance. I mean, was that done?
No, we paid for it.
We paid for it, okay.
We did almost all the closing costs, but there's a breakdown. There's a breakdown in that file.
Right, but my sense is, is that in order to make sure that we're not saying, oh, well, there's still a discrepancy, it would also be good to end up submitting to the council copies of all of the closing statements for each of these properties, and then you can see if someone sits here and says, well, I didn't get $1,000. Well, you ended up having a lien against your property for whatever it might be, and that's why you didn't get the full amount. And then we can end up putting this issue to bed, and that's, that would be my recommendation.
Okay, let's, at this point, we're not being productive. Let's just wait for the documentation, and then discuss at a future meeting.
Soon.
Can we agree, yeah. And at this point, I'm gonna open it up to public comment. Please come to the microphone.
Quick question, Ms. Laslow. Is the, the fair market value what we paid?
No.
No?
No. They, they said different, they being the state. When we filled out the application, there was a bunch of different ways that we could put in a placeholder.
Very well.
And part, one of it was two times the SEV, which is what the norm was back then to get for your house. I knew Dearborn Heights prices were higher, so I needed something higher, and that's why I went with the other websites. It was approved by the state.
Okay, thank you very much. At this point, we will, we are gonna open it up to public comment.
Can we get this documentation, though, ahead of time, before the meeting? Just let us...
When council asks for it, I'll get it.
Yeah, as soon as you can get it done, yes.
Okay, thank you.
That'd be great. Thank you. Sir, name, and you have three minutes.
Ahmad Fawaz, Harriet Street. Dave, did you listen to the same thing I just listened to? Because that's the most incoherent thing when it comes to real estate that I've ever heard in my life. I have no idea what you're talking about. Nothing you said made sense as far as value or real estate. I did look over the appraisals, and I had mutual friends of ours that are appraisers look over them, and the first thing they said was, it's completely off. There's probably, almost everything in there was a violation. All right? You might want to talk to these same people, or bring them here to talk to them. But, like I said, I don't think she's a Realtor. I don't think she's an appraiser. I don't think she's a loan officer. I don't think she's an attorney, but yet she's answering every question that every one of these people should answer.
But, no, this was...
Okay, point of order, sir. Speak through me.
I'm stopping. Yes, so I'm, I'm going to stop my comments right now, but Dave, you really need to look more into this, because that made absolutely no sense.
Okay.
Thank you, sir. Okay, next. I'm sorry, this is public comment, and we will ask if we need information from you, Mrs. Laszlo. Do not interrupt him.
Hi, my name is Deborah Tuttrow. I've lived at my address for 40 years. I have a 1937-year-old house. Now, I'm concerned about, I saw you, Dan, on, on the news, Channel 7.
Oh, we're not talking.
So, can you tell me, enlighten me, do I get a water purifier?
Okay, ma'am, this is the wrong time to ask that question. At the end of our city council meeting, we do have public comment. This is on a study session only, and it has to do with mitigation grant, and I apologize. I'll see you before the meeting starts, and I'll let you know exactly where you can come up and ask your question you need addressed.
We'll get an answer for you. We'll get an answer for you.
Thank you.
Okay. Name?
Good evening, Dana Parrish, Greenlee Park in Dearborn Heights. Two questions. One is on the, has to do with the FEMA wildflowers. Were they ever planted?
Who would you like to answer that?
Anyone in the city of Dearborn Heights who can answer that question. We're given $7,500 for wildflower planting.
Mrs. Laszlo, can you tell us if the wildflowers have been planted?
Okay, we weren't given $7,500 for wildflowers.
Okay.
And, no, there was a difference on, when the state came down, we ended up removing fences instead to remove obstructions, and we're going to end up planting trees.
Okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead.
The document that I have shows otherwise, but, okay. I must want something coming after that.
Council Chair.
Okay, council...
I thought it was my time to speak, Madam Chair.
Yes, it is.
The other thing was the part of the construction along that, that corridor there for FEMA was the curbs that had to be replaced. I brought this up last year. The mayor at that time said that he would have this horrible job done on the curbs by the contractor, had, would have replaced in the spring of this year. It's now the fall. Those curbs have not been replaced. That's our government money, our federal government money, and those curbs are still a disaster. And it has to do with water drainage and water runoff. They're still not replaced. What is the mayor's response? Is he going to hold this contractor responsible? What are we going to do? Those are our FEMA dollars that have been wasted.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, would you like to answer that? Since you discussed it with him, I think, last year.
Was he looking at her?
That's correct.
Yes, I remember that meeting that was discussed with you, Mr. Mayor, through this gentleman. I don't know, do you know where we're at?
I will review it with the DPW director, but I heard what they said in the audience. Let me follow up on it.
Yeah, because I remember that conversation. I remember that meeting.
Council Chair, to piggyback on that, I do remember that we, I think we've got, we had to change demolition companies because they were going to do the curbs. Am I correct? I believe that was one of the cases that was told to us about changing companies because they were going to do the actual curb work because the other company was not going to do curb work.
No, it was just an amendment to the contract, but we did look at alter.
Okay, thank you. Something with all that, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Your name, and you have three minutes.
Troy Brown, 234, formerly from 23420 Hanover. I think, to put it in the context for Mr. Miyaki, the context, Madam Chair, has always been about accountability, and it's always been about the money, and why we on Hanover and the rest of the flooded plains were not represented properly. And yes, to Ms. Laszlo's credit, we were compensated for our homes. But we never looked at, as the council did at that time, we never, we never looked at the, and compared the documentation. And once you compare the documentation, you recognize right away, the first thing it says comparable one was a foreclosed house on my property. I just bought a house. There's no way that they would ever use a foreclosed house in, in my, in my assess, in my appraisal. There's no way. It's illegal. And, and yet, that's, that's there. That's there. And so, the context, the context that I want to bring forward is, it's always been about, where's the money coming from? There was a third, and some report a 20% match. Where did that money come from? I always suspected that the enterprise fund, which is the water fund, has never been properly accounted for. I went back to the CSO bond, and I found at least, at least $3.8 million has never been accounted for, and this is same thing here. And so, I'm, I'm, I have no skin in the game anymore, Madam Chair. And I'm not saying that I do, and I am thankful that I don't, because I can't really respect a government that's not for the people and by the people. And that's what we have, still have here all the way since the, since the flood, is we, we have a body that's not holding the administration accountable to the financial responsibility. And so, for me, the only thing I want to say is, continue to get the documentation and continue to follow the trail, because it's not right, and something is not right. You owe me nothing. I'm not looking for anything. I'm looking for the truth. I've always been about the truth, and I think that you have a, come a long ways, and I'm encouraging you to continue on with the truth.
Okay, thank you.
Sure, you have three minutes.
Good evening. Sam Dearborn Heights. Well, if you guys don't have a copy of these documentation, I'll be more than happy to hand it to you. I got it in my car. First of all, if Mr. Miyaki could just explain to me what does an award grant mean?
Okay, Mr. Miyaki, would you like...
You want me to end up? Okay, we'll, we'll talk about the context again.
Keep it short, because we're running short of time.
Right, I'm sorry.
Our meeting starts in a few minutes.
If you could just answer the question, because I got a lot of questions.
This item, this item was attached as part of estimates, sir.
My question, sir, sir.
Okay, what was your question again?
My question is directly...
You're misrepresenting what this is.
Sir?
Okay.
If you want to talk about what you're presenting? My question to you is clear. What does an award means? It's an approval, correct?
What's an award approval mean is what he wants?
There wasn't, there wasn't money that was given until, based on the conditions of the grant.
Mr. Miyaki, Mr. Miyaki, will you answer the question? It's a yes or no.
Speak to me. He's asking you a specific question.
Well, I don't know that he actually is. He's asking me a question about what is an award, but he's talking about in this thing, which is not an award. This document was not what was awarded, nor was it ever understood that it would be. As a matter of fact, what, what, no? What was your home? What was the home that you were at?
Okay, I have a mitigation grant, I'm sorry, hazard mitigation. Okay, so, let me, let me speak. I have a hazard mitigation grant, award amount and restrictions. FEMA has approved a federal share for this project in the amount of $2,138,661.
Right. And it wasn't for specific property.
Sir, it was. And I'll come up to that in a minute. Just let the chair finish, because we have to go through her. Just remember the laws and the rules.
I guess, I guess that was what his question was. That's what a mitigation grant is, not to any specific party, but just the mitigation grant itself.
Nor to a specific property.
And if you would like me to bring you up the specific property, I'd be more than happy, because I just bring in facts, sir.
Okay, all right. What do you have now, sir?
Could you please read the highlighted area?
Okay.
And if you get a problem, because I'm using the pink color, I can read them all for you.
No, that's fine. The addresses for these homes on Hanover are 23340, 23410, 23420, 23430, 23440, 23450, 23460, 23470, 23480, 23490, 23500.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair, may I interrupt you for a quick minute, please? It says exactly, the project is acquisition and demolition of 15 flood-prone homes. They specified 15 properties only, starting from the 23410 going to 23530 Hanover. Then you get that there is also one home at 5360 Madison that has a total of four parcels on the property. Alternate homes were chosen on the first block of the north side of Hanover, west of Telegraph, because the city is only interested in owner occupancy homes west of Telegraph. These homes are not contiguous. So, technically, this whole grant that we have been debating for almost about two years, and now, out of a sudden, we got a miracle. Everybody got answers for, when everybody was mewled for the whole entire time. This grant was specified to buy these 15 houses only.
Okay.
Okay? And the share from the city was $714,000. They got a total of $2,853,000 to buy these houses by themselves. If they wanted to debate, just like Mr. Miyagi is trying to, thank you, Mr. Abella, last time. I know probably it could have been, excuse me, sir.
Okay, please, point of order here. Let's let the residents speak.
Excuse me, sir. Excuse me, sir.
Let the residents, it's, it's open comment from the resident, and then I will give you your chance.
Just one more time, if you don't mind.
Thank you.
If we are comparing apple to apple, could we come up with an orange, just because of the shape? It's impossible.
Okay.
It's not appraisal. It's another appraisal.
Two different properties, the same appraiser, same comps, we come up with different numbers. How could that be possible? You're comparing apple to apple. You've got to come up with an apple. You will not come up with an orange.
We got this comparable, we got here Detroit Kaufman Academy, yeah, same properties.
Oh, you know what? They're using a different amount, though. When they use Kaufman, you have 125, I have 160.
Right.
I know, 125 and 160. So, and they're the same exact...
That's a sales, yeah, it's different sales prices.
I think we compared this last time.
It's got different sales prices between both sheets, and then it's also got the ending result as far as the value is, is also different.
131, and you got 94 on that one. I got 133, and you got 96, and it's the same exact address, and it's an appraisal that was used to compare, in comparison for what this house should be purchased for. This is, wow.
Adjusted, the adjusted sales price is, is different on all three, between all three properties. But, to be fair, the adjusted sales price is adjusted based on the original property. Okay? So, I'm going to give you an example.
Look at the, those two properties specifically. Identical in the shape, building material identical, square footage identical. I'm sorry, sir.
You're talking about the Hanover property?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, he is.
Yes, sir.
Okay, I, I don't know those properties specifically, just the data, I mean...
You got the description right there. You got that appraisal.
Okay.
Say 4515 Detroit.
75,165. One is a tri-level, one is a quad-level. You're talking about the original properties, 23340 and 23420. Lot size is a little bit different. One is tri-level, one's quad-level, so it's probably some changes. I mean, I'd have to go through the whole thing. Can't do it right now, obviously.
Yeah, I think we're going to have to do this at another time, because we are running over into our regular meeting time.
It's absolutely fine. But there's... I decided to waste a lot of time. Just one last thing.
No problem.
If we are comparing houses that were occupied with certificate documents, everything in them, and they were completely redone after the flood of 2014, we come back and put up these comparable properties, they're all completely unlevel of properties, you can look at the pictures, and it's quite a bit funny. How come they did not give them the price that we can see on Zillow over there? It's appraised for 163 on Zillow.
Good question.
I just got a question for you. The appraisals that you have here, because I remember at the time, there was two different appraisals that we had. We had the first initial appraisals that were done by one appraisal company, and they were, they came back at state level from the state police and said they were, these were not good enough. So, I just want to clarify, and I'm not arguing with you, I'm just trying to clarify. These appraisals, you're showing us here, are the second appraisal, correct?
Those are, but they are claiming that they have submitted to the state of Michigan.
Okay, so that should be the final appraisal.
I have personally spoken to the state of Michigan, FEMA, myself, and their answer was, we gave the city the money. You've got to come back and talk to the city. You guys got to finish it up with the city.
Okay.
They're completely out of it. They awarded the grant to the city, so the city are the one who were supposed to finish up that project.
Okay, thank you very much.
And at the same time, since you guys were talking about closing, and Ms. Laszlo was claiming everything was done through the title company, title company were doing everything, that's absolutely unbelievable. We were coming to the city, to the city to close, and guess what? They didn't even have a final watering. The city could not even get their own final water meeting. At the same time, where they were trying to do their meeting to approach us that this program is going to be going on, Ms. Laszlo herself stated at the library, if she, if she doesn't remember, if she doesn't remember, I can remind you, that if we don't go with these grants right now, they'll be willing to go with the eminent domain. We will be forced to be leaving these houses with absolutely nothing, and possibly a dollar or two. So, if she doesn't remind, remember that, she probably needs to sit...
All right, thank you, Mr. Miyaki. I told, I told you I would give you time, Mr. Miyaki.
Thank you, Council Chair. And this is just really to address some of the points that were raised. Mr. Parrish said something about the wildflowers. The document that he had, again, was an estimate. It was part of the grant application. It wasn't necessarily what ended up ultimately being approved in terms of that specific expenditure. If you look at the grant application, you'll see that there are things about legal fees for me. I did not do the bulk of the legal work with regard to this. It was all done by an entirely different firm.
Okay, well, I guess...
So, the line items in there were not meant to end up being something set in stone that were going to end up being approved specifically, especially when it came to the property. The state was not going to give us whatever value we put down here unless it was confirmed by FEMA. And that gets it to the, to the other point. In other words, what was submitted were estimates. Even with the grant approval, it was still contingent in terms of us getting the money, namely, the city or the property owners getting the money, that the appraisal was going to